Okay.
Yeah, that happens.
I do.
You ready?
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call the, um, this, uh, City of Lafayette City Council meeting, um, work session to order. Um, let's go ahead and start to stand with my allegiance. I'm going with that in a gender. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one individual.
With the virtue of the law.
And oh, changing that Brandon, can you please call?
Council Paulson?
Present.
Council Burrows?
Here.
Council Carswell? Council Gilligan?
Here.
Council Kidd? Council Mackey, um?
He's excused.
And Mayor Malcolmson?
Here. Thanks. We have a quorum, fair enough. Um, so we'll go ahead and get started and if the other two wander in. Um, so this is our work session for strategic planning. Um, Brandon did create a worksheet for us. Um, to go through, but, um, at any time, if you guys need to veer from it, please speak up now instead of at the end of the meeting when you had wished to have gone some other direction. Um, yeah, anything you wanna kick off away? I just wanna remind us that Brandon is part of this to give some insight or hey, wait a minute and thoughts? And maybe help us facilitate, but that this is our goal setting.
Mm-hmm.
Now, so please respect Brandon's hard, you know, balance of. That, so.
Track, yeah?
Yeah, so okay, Brandon, I'm gonna hand it to you.
So I just wanna emphasize high level focus. Um, last time, I think some of us started getting weeds a little bit. This is a five-year plan. I know there's things that we, that we really want, a lot yet to do or, or be a part of in the next ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. But that's more comprehensive. That's more in totality. I think we need to look at the short term, um, and with this council and maybe the next council. Um, and try to lay out a, a strategy for policy in five years. Um, I know last time there was talks about schools and, and, uh, and, um, uh, like creating, uh, like buying public lands for the schools and Mayor, Mayor Malkison and I met with the school districts and there's no any, there's no plans to build any middle schools anytime soon.
I can give a bigger report on that, um, at our next council meeting during my management part, cause it's kinda interesting.
Yeah, like water can build up, um, but with enrollment declining. McMinville said, you know, they were probably most likely bust. That doesn't mean it will never happen in thirty-five, forty, forty-five years, but I don't think it's gonna happen in the next twenty-five to thirty, just with declining enrollments. So we, we, we wanna focus on things. I want you all to focus on things that would be quantifiable deliverables that we can go back and we can track and saying, this is what we, this is what we said in twenty-twenty-five. This is how we wanna make it happen, cause then when I can, then I can prepare a budget, if it's gonna be budget-based policy or if it's gonna be, um, just non-monetary-based policy. We wanna say when we're done in five years, what did we accomplish from twenty-twenty-five that we set out on our goal for? And the things you gotta think about, just the environmental scan, where we're at right now population-wise, we're encroaching five thousand people, um, and we're seeing about a two to three percent growth rate year over year. Um, we have the utilities, we have a water, we have wastewater, we have parks, we, we have the SDCs. Um, we have the park updates that we talked about, you all finished the parks master plan. Is there anything in those plans that you wanna see come to fruition in five years? Um, housing, obviously we're talking, we just got the grant for the housing capacity. Where do we see housing going? Uh, wastewater challenges, water, the future of water, also the, the future of public safety, fire, um. So we, we need to look at where our environment is now and where this environment can be in five years. So why I, I love to think twenty, twenty-five years out, I don't think we're ready for that because we have all these other things that we're trying to piece together to get us to another comp- comprehensive plan when time goes. So I really wanted to kinda really be, you know, a discussion of five years policy. And I will be able to help where I can in terms of the factual items, where we're at with this, what do we take for this? I may not have answers tonight, um, but if there's something when it comes down to monetary figures, obviously this is the first of two, maybe three sessions. So I think this is just where we get the initial ideas flowing, so we can actually have a, a document to build off, I can bring you back at, at a third meeting or a council meeting and say, this is what I'm gonna put online. I'm gonna work on, we're gonna have gold tracks and we're gonna say every year budget time, how are we looking? How'd we look the last year at, at, end of twenty-twenty-six? How'd we do for twenty-twenty-six? And, um, no idea is a bad idea. Some ideas may need to be a parking lot, which is not right now, maybe later, or maybe two staff involved. But we really wanna focus on where you, where you see this policymaking body in five years and how that what you do, the discussions you have tonight are gonna curate that base for the staff to move. But also to hold coun- coun- council itself accountable on, on strategies over the next few years.
And I think want and need needs to be balanced too. We all can want bunch of things, but I think we need some, you know, whatever we come up to, we need to balance that. That tough love sometimes.
I think that also, uh, the five-year plan should be even if something isn't completed or accomplished yet.
Yeah.
It, it could be in process in five years, so.
So I, you know, one, one of the first things that we, we probably should all think about, well, you all. I, I, I can, I can, I can, I can whiteboard this or I, we could just write it down and I gather these thoughts and I put them together for the, for the next document, but where, where do you all want, where do you all see Lafayette in five years individually? You can write it down, you can discuss it. I can write it down, but I think this is something you individually, where do you each individually see Lafayette in five years from today?
Well, I like the way you're phrasing it there versus here, we said, what do you want Lafayette to be in five years? Cause I mean, I want Lafayette to be a bunch of things and I think our community wants it to be this, 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 but where do we actually see it?
Yeah.
Because of, you know?
At the end of twenty-thirty, say you all say, hey, my time is done. I've, I've done my service. I'm able to walk away as a policymaker. In these five years from twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty, what do you wanna see accomplished as policymakers and how do we get there?
Coming in. More businesses coming in. And then the, uh, wastewater, new there. Treatment facility.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is a, uh, to lessen the expediency of growth in our annual budget.
Lessen the expediency of growth.
Wanna explain?
I think our budget is growing too fast.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I was like the growth of the people in the budget. Sorry, okay.
Now, when you mean that, let's try to refine that a little bit. Obviously, we have, we have the general fund and then obviously we have the business sector of our, of our city utilities and SDC funds, et cetera. Are you talking about growth in taxation of, of property taxes or just in terms of us overall as a business?
Both, like, cause I don't see cities as businesses. That's, I think that's a problem. But businesses are for profit and cities are not. I mean, for profit means we're taking more from the constituents who put us in the seat. So I think priorities have to be getting debt paid off.
Mm-hmm.
Because the less you have obligation to go out, the less you need to come in. And look, there's gonna be growth, right? Like our employees deserve raises and, right? Like there are things like that that have to happen. But, you know, like there have been ideas floated about the wastewater where, you know, we raise rates to this, then we fall by for debt. Or we can raise rates for citizens in order to obligate them to more debt. That's pay more so we can put burden you with debt. That's, that's insane. That's backwards thinking. It is frankly, it's municipal thinking. But I think the reason that this year our city is not struggling financially the way some of the municipalities are, is that this body has thought differently as far as finances go, and I think we need to keep doing that. That's why we're well-positioned in an unpredictable current municipal economic status, right? Like with federal funding being a little unpredictable right now and therefore states are getting less and therefore the municipalities are getting less, we're actually pretty stable cause considering what some of our neighboring communities are, and I think that we need to continue that fiscal conservative nature and it'll stay that way. And our city is not growing at a rate in which I think justifies the rate at which our budget is growing. And, you know, look, part of it is we have a few areas in the budget where our money goes that is a crazy percentage of our annual budget. We just, we gotta find ways to not burden our citizens by taking more money for whether it's through water rates, whether it's through property tax. This needs to continue to be an affordable place to live.
So kinda like fine-tuning, is there a way to do this cheaper and stuff, you know, like?
I think, I think the biggest thing is getting out of debt first.
Yeah.
We have so many.
Handling, yes.
Handling our debt. Yeah, I mean.
Responsible or poor.
You know, I think as a group, this, this body did a good job of figuring out what could have been an absolute nightmareable water situation in twenty-twenty-three. For a few days it was.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, I don't know, South Clear.
And like that, that can get paid off, but then we do have another financial obstacle in getting the wastewater figured out. And we need to figure out how to do it in a way that's responsible to the constituents.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And transparent, more transparent to them, like. Um.
I feel like the last few years we've been.
We've been really, and that's why we're in such a good spot. The citizens know what we're asking for, they know where it's going, right? Like, we've been very trained, and I think Brandon's helped a ton with his quarterly updates on the budget, like we've been really good. We need to stick to that, but we also the budget's still growing pretty heavily year over year. And I think when budget time comes around, we really need to zone in on that stuff and maybe it's long-term planning to make sure that we're not taking on more debt obligations to tie the city for ten, fifteen, twenty-five years on bonds. Like, there's a lot of things we can do there. But for me, it's a wastewater, right?
That's what we have to plan for because you know that's coming, so if you don't plan for it, the debt's gonna be.
Yes, somebody mentioned the wastewater and I think that just was hand in hand with our budgetary goals. And tha- that's a big piece of it. We have to be able to provide the essential services and do it in a way that this is still an affordable community to live in.
Right, and I think the, many times we do that, uh, replacement of the vehicles, we're looking to, the fire truck is gonna need to be replaced in, before the five years is up most likely. And we are, we've got a, a fund for that and we're, we're contributing to that, so not, uh, not all of the budget is being spent. Some of it is being set aside for
Building.
Proper things.
Planning.
Sure, yes.
Well, and I think, sorry, I just lost my track. All right, keep going. I think, I think the sewer treatment plant falls under my means, like that's the number one thing that pops out to me, but in a way that, that question of where do you want, what, where do we see Lafayette in five years? I wanna see us looking back and go, we handled it before it became an emergency. Whatever the topic is, I wanna see that we could look back and go, we didn't sweep things under the rug for others to deal with. It doesn't mean we had solved it a hundred percent or got to the finish line, but, um, I think that we easily could hit the can a little bit longer for the wastewater if you wanted to, and I don't wanna do that, even if it's the tough love that's gonna happen.
Yeah, I think that the wastewater is, treatment plant is a, um, we need to have confidence that it's linked to fulfill our needs and not be, not be something that's a surprise. So, yeah, that is, that to me is right up there. If not number one.
Uh, yeah, to me, it's, that's why I was like, it's that need, not the wants. Like, there's so many things that I want for this town, but, yeah.
But I think fully is right. It doesn't mean that we go out and raise taxes or sell bonds.
That to me is never my number one.
Yeah.
solution. Unfortunately, sometimes you have to, not saying that we should, I'm just saying, you know, I, I don't wanna see that as the easy, oh, we can just raise taxes, or we can just get the people to pay for it this way. It's okay. Is there a way to do it in another way?
Brandon, you look like you were about to say something.
Oh, no, 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 I was, I was gonna welcome Council Carswell, see if got, got, got him caught up. So we've got, we were just kinda talking about, um, thinking very high level.
Yeah.
Five years from twenty-twenty-six to twenty, twenty-thirty. What do you wanna accomplish as a policymaking body? And obviously the staff will work on strategies and dollar amounts, obviously in, in the forthcoming meetings that we have surrounding this, um, we, you know, we had mentioned things like, um.
Not paying fines, that'd be a good one.
Um, population, utilities, park updates, transportation, housing, wastewater challenges. Um, just kind of looking at the environmental scan, we, we mentioned, we've talked about, I know there was some discussion last time about middle school.
Yeah.
And we had talked to school, to school and we don't think there's gonna be any middle school development here or anything anytime soon. So I wanted to kinda just really look into the next five years.
Yeah.
And that's kinda where, you know, I wanna make sure we're all stay, well, you were all staying tonight, so, um.
Sorry I'm late. I tried to get back from Sherwood High. They destroyed McMinville tonight.
Uh-oh.
My son's all super sad, anyway.
Okay, sorry. I was wondering a second.
I was trying to.
No. Um, so sewer. And I think there's other things that might have to happen in order for other things to happen, like I know before I talked about possibly looking at, does our charter need to be updated for that spending limit, that million-dollar spending limit? But to me that is, well, that would be a, a task in order to achieve other, um, things. That doesn't have to be, it's a goal in itself. Like if it comes to it where, hey, we think that's gonna be a hindrance. And where that comes from for me is looking back, um, I've been jumping down a rabbit's hole of reading minutes back from um, and they, they talked about it years ago about that a million dollars is, that threshold is not what it, what used to be.
But I think we have to account for the population size of the town when it comes to stuff like that.
Well, also, yeah, I mean, a million dollars is still about six, let's see, like, what, six point something percent of our annual budget? If, if I'm not sitting here and I'm just a resident, I, I wanna say it's more than six percent of the total annual budget, like.
That's what I'm saying, population. Yeah, well, and I'm not saying it has to, I'm saying we have to consider that where it's the ticket price on some of these items where, like for the sewer, if it I, I'm huge on having our voters have a say in things. Um, but it's, I'm gonna be honest, it scares me that one of our big things coming up. And it's not even that, it could be like a big, a different repair, whatever, that is so easy to hit over a million dollars that we have to wait for another election.
Well.
But that's why we need to start planning now because those things are happening.
Right, and I think, uh, for four thousand five hundred, four thousand six hundred, five thousand people, a million dollars is a lot of money. That's not like you can just send in, everybody send in a check for, you know, twenty-five thousand and we'll be there or whatever. It's, it's, it's a lot of money. So I don't mind being accountable to, for a number and if we go to change that number from a million dollars, make them, we need to have a good reason.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I said that, that's kinda on my radar, like, the, if it needs to be discussed in order to
Right.
before, but it doesn't need to be its own for the sake of it, let's just do it.
You know, I think the, a project of that size and the scope that we're talking about with the water treatment plant, um, maybe it, it, it should be well-presented to the people and the people.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I understand that emergencies do come up and things happen and a million dollars can, can be really fast.
Brandon, how much was the Canyon Pump thing that we didn't realize was gonna?
Uh, what was that? I think one point three million I had applied for for the grant? For the Canyon Pump Station?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And so I, I'm trying to remember back like conversations, cause I think you're the one that first brought up, just putting that chart on my radar. Is being at that million mark though, is that gonna hinder us from grants? And getting grants where, um, some other cities I've talked to, if it's, if, if, to get a grant that's over a million dollars and the givers of the grant know that in order to spend that grant, you have to get it on the ballot.
That, that, that wa- that wasn't the tall tale reason for being declined. Obviously, there's a lot of projects. But that was a factor, uh, cause I, in every single conversation I had with the state legislators, they said, what's one barrier to this project? And I said, the million-dollar boat, getting this money and then being able to turn over an election in November, to receive that money in this by any end. And that was a big thing, cause then I would have to go to May and then the funds would have to be expended before that, so some of those things, but I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, that's not, I mean.
Yeah, I just, I don't think consideration for grants is, is good, you know, it's, uh, I mean, honestly, take away, say, constituents and specific matters of million dollars, I, like, like Russ said, a million dollars is a lot to a community's size. So, yeah, it's like, it's what, six, six, maybe six and a half percent of the budget, something like that, like of our entire annual budget. You wrote on that.
Question, Brandon, on the wastewater treatment center. Are we looking at having to build a new one somewhere in a different location? Are we looking at doing phases of upgrade?
The way Gordon and DEQ are approaching it, I think we can stay at our current location and it would probably be around twelve million dollars or so.
For the headworks?
No, just for the new, up for the plant upgrades.
So we're not, we're not looking at tearing that one down and building another one. We're looking at?
Well, there'll be two options.
Okay.
And I can tell you this council is probably not gonna wanna go for about twenty-five to thirty million dollar wastewater treatment.
Cause we'd also have to buy the property, I assume.
We would have to probably look at expanding and whatnot and.
Yeah.
Gordon.
You can't tear that one down and have nothing while you build the new one where it was.
That's, okay.
And yeah, I mean, everything rolled downhill, so you wanna kinda keep it at a downward, I mean, that, that's the most ideal place for Lafayette is where it's at right now.
That's what I was.
Any type of expansion would, would require encroachment, probably most likely of that, buying pieces of that big lot, that's probably not gonna happen. Um, and Gordon, Gordon knows limitations, as is DEQ, um, but, I mean, looking at what other wastewater treatment plants are going for locally and nationally, I mean, we're probably looking at about, I'd say in the low end, nine million, I'd say on the high end, eighteen.
Okay.
Just, just for an, just for rehab and expand, a rehab and
An expansion.
A, a, a small expansion, but a, a whole brand new one would probably be twenty-five to thirty.
For like a twenty-year solution, is what you're saying?
No, 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 well, I mean, no, uh, any, any upgrades would get us to probably thirty, forty years before upgrades, kinda like now. If ours was built correctly, twenty-five, twenty years ago, we probably wouldn't be in the situation we are now.
So I, I remember when we went on the tour, you guys were talking about, we really need a new headwork and we're having all these trouble, but I didn't know we needed a nineteen million dollar upgrade.
Yeah.
And so.
Potentially.
How long?
Yeah.
So how long are we looking at for? If we were to do all, all the upgrades and remodels that we need to do, how long are we looking?
I mean, DEQ, so the wastewater uh, the wastewater facilities update, we'll have to go to DEQ, DEQ would send it back for revisions, then they would approve it, then you all would approve it. And that's probably like within another year, so like where DEQ's moving slower than we are on that.
But then in terms of like contractors coming in and doing the work, are we five years of project to, and, and I know you might not have the answers, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if things worked out perfectly, when it came to financing, finding the dollars, going after bid, I'd, I'd say by twenty-twenty-eight, we can ground break twenty.
Say like, when do we have to write that check back?
So that is our priority.
It has to be.
Well, that's, before you walked in, I think that's what each of us
Yeah.
stated was whether we want it to be or not, that.
For sure.
And it doesn't mean we can't work on other things too or have more goals and stuff, but.
Well, and, and that, that's just one, I mean, that, that's obviously one thing, there are other things that we have, livability policies. I know there's been a lot of talk about livability standards. I don't know if this is something that roundtable, if there's something that policy-wise for livability or housing, and they, there are things that we need to start working on because planning commission is talking about mobile food carts tonight and getting those established, but they're also talking about looking at driveway standards in the LCDM. You know, so there's a lot of things that we're talking about that have kinda come to fruition about, you know, in just terms of housing livability. Is there anything that, you know?
The roads are looking nice. Thought I'd say that. I've heard a lot of compliments for bridge and.
Thank you, thank you also that to the contractors and the team. There's some, there's some other work they're gonna do, um, with some of the painting and the shrifting.
So much nicer though.
Major, major low cost, I mean, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, in, in the, in the scheme of government, that's a low cost and I think very high impact.
Yeah.
So that was kudos to you all, we were able to make it work and, I mean, it was under budget, you know?
Well, that to me, you know, that, I remember when we were talking about thinking outside the box and doing it that way. That's not a now ignore Bridge Street, that kind of bought council time to realize that that street eventually is gonna need like substantial rebuild or, right?
Well.
Yeah, but I just thought of, that thought of ten years, I'm saying I don't wanna sit on our hands for ten years and what, you know, where.
Why, why, what's the TSP, as a TSP works out, like the, the scope of work was approved this week um, by ODOT and we're gonna go into contractor selection soon. Um, as a TSP's working through and then the housing capacity is working through, those are gonna be major items that are really gonna help us saying, hey, here's where we're gonna grow, here's how we can grow. Um, and then supporting of the transportation system plan, McMinville's is doing theirs as well, so I'll, we obviously tie in a lot. I'm sure McMinville's gonna talk about how the residents have to go, it takes them twenty minutes to get through Lafayette just to go to work. And we're gonna have the same comments on our TSPs on how to mitigate traffic, um.
How do we do that?
Yeah.
I mean, build a bridge over.
Split one ways.
Contact Sherwood and find out how much it costs them for that bridge. That'd be about the length.
That's an industrial bridge and it was thirty-two million.
Yeah, but that's my point.
Yeah.
I don't see any other way.
Button walk across.
Fancy though.
Um.
In terms of, uh, going back before, um, going back to like livability, like when we look at sidewalks, are, are, is there anything like streets, like, is, like, I'm just trying to open up the dialogue. When we're looking at like sidewalks or walkability, like assess about, is there anything, we talked about trails before, not we, but it's been mentioned from previous planning commissioners, is there anything like that we're looking at doing, like that you all feel in the five years? We should have some headway on.
Better parking here. For downtown buildings.
Because that's part of the issue is like, there's nowhere to just easily pull off.
Yeah, I think that issue will become more depressing at the rate at which businesses continue to move. And look, the last couple of years.
Businesses aren't gonna wanna come in.
Well, actually, the last couple of years, we've had, you know, there's a new market in town that did some great work on the building and there's a new pizza place moving in that also did some good work.
They'll be hiring fourteen full-time employees, by the way, the city's having a market.
I'm sorry, would you?
They'll be hiring fifteen full-time employees.
Said there will be a hundred and fifty.
Yes, but we don't need to park that.
Um, but, yeah. Oh, but I mean, I think that these businesses will push the issue and it will, you know, it'll work itself out at the right timeline. I think it's hard to line up a lot of extra parking when basically we're slowly getting businesses in, right? Like it's not it, the, the time. I've always believed that the free private market will pace itself, right? And so as the businesses get busier, the need will be apparent.
Well, and that kinda come, like, you act about like livability, what do you see? Do you see trails? Do you see the? I would like us just to fine-tune what we have. You know, we just dealt with the, this driveway thing or, um, uh, we've heard from the planning commission, oh, more park land. I, I know that we have to look in the future, but can we, can we take care of the parks we have?
Mm-hmm.
Can we?
We don't have the money and the budget with this water treatment facility to even be discussing putting in new parks.
I mean, no, it would not have to be park SDC, right? And so like, we're limited by
There's not a lot.
Exactly, we're limited, exactly, we're limited.
Coming in for it, so like.
Mm-hmm, like, okay, that's great if we spend all our money that we could ever find to purchase more property X, Y, Z, but we've got these place, this place and this place that are just empty lots.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about acquiring, like, like, we talked about the, the park, the, what, two meetings ago?
Mm-hmm.
The, the preliminary design, I think that's great, you know, especially falls within the budget we have
Yeah.
through the SDC. But as far as larger projects, I think everybody here agrees, it has to be wastewater.
It has to.
And, and that should be the absolute, honestly, to me, if we're talking about five years, that is the absolute priority. Everything else is ancillary and dictated by the dedicated budget through whatever it is, whether it's parks, SDCs, right, streets, SDCs. But as far as our big projects, the wastewater has to be net. And, and it's not close.
Well, and it's such a big number one that I know that ideally it's, oh, have this many plans and this many goals and this, it's that allows.
Putting things into motion.
That's like a circle, you know?
Yeah, but I'm just saying like that is a big number one. And like it almost takes up number one, two and three in my mind.
And, and because of the numbers we're talking about, we're getting it done, and it, not only is it the biggest priority, it should be the biggest time spent because we need to figure out a way to do this in a way that we, we can't have. Yeah, we, we can't have Labor Day twenty-twenty-three all over again, right? Like we gotta have, we gotta find a way to do this efficiently. And I mean monetarily efficiently. So I, I think that's the, the biggest, the biggest priority, no matter what comes up, that's gotta be the biggest priority.
Yeah, acknowledging that, but taking a step outside as far as livability, I would like to reduce how much we spend and how much we tax.
Oh, you just.
You were late.
We, we are.
First, you know.
No, no, it's nice to hear a second. I think you literally summed up what he has.
Every dollar we spend, just across the board, that would take off some math.
Says the government's talking about.
So, I know. Brandon, do you need anything else from us tonight about the sewer stuff?
Um, no, I mean, I, I think the biggest concern with the sewer, and I, I've talked to Council Gilligan and Jamie about this, is that's the one account that we, we're not comfortable in. That's the one account that an emergency happens, we're gonna be robbing Peter the general fund to pay ball.
Yeah.
At a higher, we're gonna have to do it at a, at a, at a, at a interest rate that nobody's gonna wanna pay. So as we navigate this, that's when, now that we know, I mean, we were already, we're talking. So, as we navigate this, that's when, now that we know, I mean, we were already, we were talking earlier with Greg and, and Gordon about, we, we need to get something done ASAP, emergency-wise, to bring to council for the sewer, and it's not looking, it's, we're gonna have to borrow money from somewhere, to make, to make these things happen, and obviously, that's, I mean, not borrow money from externally, but to make things happen dollars and cents-wise, but there's only, there's only, uh, uh, there's only so much we can borrow, we can't borrow from our SDC accounts, we can borrow, we can pretty much borrow from the general fund, but once you borrow from the general fund, then that takes away some of the other abilities we're able to do with the general fund, especially we already have a general fund debt for Mac Water Light, so there's still things that we have to manage with that, and.
What's left, do you know what's left on the, I'm so sorry, Dan, do you know what's left on the Mac Water Light?
About four years, right, I think, four years.
I meant, I meant the number.
Oh, we were to write a check to pay it off right now.
Are you offering?
Yeah.
No, I said, if, if Lee were to write a check, hey.
Endorse the check from me.
Well, the MOU will be coming at the next, uh, that actually is in my, just came in my inbox at six o'clock, coming to council for the MOU to not have to pay anything on the system for a while, uh, Mac Water Light, cut a check, oh, August, it would be, uh, one point two million, or some one point one million.
This last August.
Yes, boy, let me see, we got here, we got RISM at one point five, annual payment, oh, sorry, here we go, uh, five ninety, five hundred and ninety thousand.
It's not a shock.
That's what's the balance.
Yes. Our total debt is six hundred, six, six point six million. Most of that obviously is with the fire bond we're paying until I'm dead.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Is that building? That fire, but you mean for the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Luckily, luckily, the fire station bond, it started at two twenty-eight, and it's about two twenty-eight.
Would you just accept or ask?
It's possible, but five ninety next fiscal.
If we cut everything, like.
But do we have the early penalty, if we do that?
That'd be easily.
Look, we had talked to them about that, if we paid up early, and I think they said there would be no, remember when we were talking interest, I think they said, I'm thinking for that, if we paid early, would there be a hit, and I think they even said no. Um, I mean, yeah.
Or, yeah, so Brandon, if we said we're paying that off next year.
Who's the debt to us, to the general fund, or just to Mac Water Light?
Mac Water Light.
Mm-hmm.
Via the water, via the water.
So money's working for now and later, right, cash, time value of money, you think we offer to do that, they give us break?
No.
It was not huge.
Yeah.
No.
I can ask.
I mean, look, the way that public funding is right now, they might be cash strapped, they might want the influx now.
They're getting ready for new water treatment plant.
And then we get rid of that debt obligation, might open up some lanes for us on the wastewater treatment plant, right?
It's, if it's anything like my budget, where you free up your smaller debt, so that you've got bigger collateral.
Whenever you do that, though, your dryer dies or something.
Yeah.
Own any dryer?
Well, we'd actually do it to all the works.
Hey, the Malcolmson House has bought enough appliances this year to, um, so if we were, I mean, obviously, we're.
Okay, I'm just spitballing here.
Yeah, how, what would that do, you said it's possible, but what, what are we looking at?
Probably freeze up the payments that we have to make.
No, I meant like, what does that do to our budget, like?
I, I, he might need to pull Jamie in.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean.
Comfortable year.
I mean, I mean, we have about four hundred or so days of, of savings for an emergency or catastrophe, you know?
Is that?
That would probably be a lot more than.
Ballpark.
What is four hundred days of emergency content?
We're on TV, people.
I know.
I think I have.
Outside of the math, I'll just ask them for the flat number.
I used to be paid for the next four hundred days.
I don't have to, I, I can get it for the next council, my wrap-up next week, tomorrow I'll wrap up. I don't wanna quote something and then I come back, so yeah, I, I can give you the jack dollar amount the next meeting on what that will look like versus how that would deplete our funds.
Without a quote.
Yeah. Probably like one point four million, maybe?
So one point four comes down to, yeah, so one point four maybe, comes down to maybe nine hundred, if reserves, we get rid of the debt obligation, it probably gives us more flexibility, for wastewater treatment, I would think, now that might be a question for Jamie, but.
Um, and how many days is, we've got four hundred, and I know, I know you're proud of that, Brandon, I know you are. And I'm proud of it, hearing what some other cities are going through, what is the bare, I don't wanna go with bare minimum, but what is the bare minimum amount of days?
Well, GFOA, the government, the fin, uh, the government, the financial organization recommends about sixty to ninety days.
I'd say a year.
Yeah, but I think, but I think, God forbid, I mean, God forbid, three weeks happened, a big one finally happens, we can continue services, for a year for our residents, and we can, I mean, that's what things, I mean,
I know.
We've seen it all the time, I mean, God forbid, something happens in our cybersecurity system, and all the monies, I mean, there, there's always that, that cushion to have, I mean, I know some cities are, are okay with, you know, sixty days, you know, but God forbid something happens.
Other, there's, you know, another city that they just had to take a loan out because they didn't have.
Yeah.
But we knocked that debt out.
Yeah.
We don't have the payment, that payment would rebuild that.
No, it's gonna go to water.
It's gonna go to sewer.
Kinda go to water sewer, where we need it anyway, right?
But it could help possibly with loans and stuff, cause that, our debt to ratio would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna play, I'm gonna.
Only the collateral.
Devil to advocate here, I wanna make sure that I am not for having our citizens pay this service fee longer than they have to, but our service fee was created to pay off that debt.
It would fall off.
It would fall off.
Yeah, and the five dollar one is gonna be falling off next.
Once, that would show our citizens, hey, we're not sitting on a pile of money and still making you pay it.
What does that service fee producing annually roughly? Sorry, you had, now I was gonna come.
Easily, you know, but.
Sixteen hundred, less than sixteen hundred.
We have six hundred meters, fifteen hundred bucks in a fee, so you're tired.
The water debt surcharge, so the water debt surcharge this year, we're projecting about three hundred and two thousand, which is going towards the math that we worked on for the, the Mac Water repayment.
Yeah.
We had that little bit extra flexibility every year, so we're not doing a, a big payment that last year, and then just a water maintenance surcharge, a hundred thousand dollars. Now, I mean, I mean, it can be a bigger discussion, but that, that can be flipped to sewer, if it was paid off early, but then I know that, because the whole thing is, the one thing, especially if we need money from the state, the fifteen dollars, they would probably rather see that tied into a rate instead of an actual fee.
But that's, but that's insane, because rates, how many times, each year had their water rate go down? Like, a, a, a surcharge falls off.
Yeah.
Rate increases, don't, they build.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about at our, at that big council meeting, when we put that in was, um, the big difference between your process of coming with this debt fee, compared to just adding it into the rates, was the rates keep, no balling.
So if that's what the state wants, are there alternative modes of funding? Is there an institution that would, that would actually lend on the fact of surcharges rather than rate increases?
I haven't asked, I mean, maybe private, private banks would.
At that point, I'd rather use private bank. I mean, I mean, because you're, you're asking, you're, the state is essentially asking municipalities to be fiscally irresponsible over their constituents. And that's, I, I mean, it's a problem, and, and I understand that bigger cities have less issues with that, but I, I, I think most people here would agree that this is a pretty fiscally response, like fiscally conservative constituency.
Yeah. Mostly, yeah.
Yeah, no, who wants to increase their water rates so that they can qualify to, like, let's pay more monthly for water so that we can take on debt?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's backwards.
Well, it, I get it, and I agree with all heart with this, but at the same time, if it's a situation of, that's the only way we can get the funding. To do this, we don't have a choice.
Right, and that's why I'm asking, what are the alternative modes of funding? I would much rather see a surcharge that drops off for our citizens, than a rate increase that will build, not just for now, so we qualify for the debt, but then increase by probably four percent a year for the foreseeable future. Cause if you increase it by twenty-five percent right now, so that we can qualify for state granted debt, then twenty-five percent grows exponentially at four percent a year, that's not just a twenty-five percent increase.
Twenty-five percent then turns into, yeah, um.
I mean, Brandon, how realistic do you think it is for us in the next five years to get all these upgrades and remodels done on it?
And this is just to bring it into compliance.
Well, I mean, more than compliance.
Why, just cause compliance plus capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Confidence there too, that, you know, um.
And will these upgrades include stability for if we are hit with the big one?
Oh, yeah, any, any public project has, has, has to make upgrade.
As I say, the ground's gonna turn to like sand.
Liquid action.
Okay, you know, I was the great trick out today.
I mean, I mean, and anything is possible, and I think, I think we're, we're all pretty aggressive, and I think we all care about the communities that we serve. I think anything is possible, it's just putting dollars and cents into it and wanting to have difficult conversations internally and externally, but, I mean.
Well, one thing I love, I'm gonna speak maybe out of turn, one thing I love about this council that I'm sitting with, is we're okay with those tough conversations. Or at least I.
Which is, which is gonna hurt the least? Um, if we continue making the Mac Water and Light payment every month and something crashes, or, or we pay it off and start building the fund to be able to make the.
Well, even if we get the, the debt satisfied in two years, instead of four years, you know, like, that's what we need to be planning now, because we can be taking that stuff into consideration, moving forward, it might not make sense to make that huge lump sum, but.
But can we make a bigger lump sum then?
But if.
It's also.
If you made the, if you made the payoff next year, year after in the budget, you could make the adjustment of, more money towards the, um, water treatment.
Maybe, but we gotta remember that service charge, that's also helping us pay that down. And so, if the reality is we can't really break ground for two year, two or three years, it might make sense to budget this and plan this in a way, cause that is gonna help us financially.
It's gonna help.
The surcharge is going away once that debt is satisfied.
Correct. But when it comes down to, uh, the big dollars, as we were talking, it's really not a huge amount of money, or what, three hundred thousand, did you say?
Three hundred, it's three hundred thousand on fifteen dollar surcharge annually, another hundred thousand on five, right? So that's four hundred grand a year, I'm sorry, right, four hundred grand a year, right, so four hundred grand a year, over ten years is four million, over twenty is eight million. Okay, over twenty-five is ten million, so if you can get this in the lower range of the, you said eight to sixteen or something like that, nine to eighteen, whatever it was, if you get in the range, and you can get a lender other than the state who will do it based on a surcharge, rather than on asinine rates, then you could actually make this work, if we pay off the Mac Water and Light debt now, and we get that surcharge in place to take care of the water infrastructure for wastewater, over a twenty or twenty-five year note, we could pay it on that surcharge, and that surcharge could drop off, now look, twenty-five years from now, I don't know where I'm gonna be, I don't know where y'all are gonna be, and we may not get the reward of it dropping off. But that also doesn't account for growth, how many meters are gonna be added in over time, ten years from now, who knows, maybe they'll develop across from the new development, I don't know.
You think they have to plan, not, not to be planning on that.
Or, but, but with, just on average, things grow year over year, right, there's a reason that every ten-year census of the last four decades, Lafayette hasn't lost population.
Yeah, we're growing, we're, we're pretty much growing up at this point, we're, we're, we're growing up, not so much out.
We don't have much growth this way, and even this way.
But, but the fact of the matter is, with zero growth, over twenty or twenty-five years, it covers an eight to ten million dollar bill on us, with zero.
All I'm saying is, don't sit here and budget like we did with the whole homes coming in.
No, also, there were some bad deals in there too, and that's, that's a different situation.
You're just starting out this surcharge, like, oh, well, there's also the future, like.
Well, but wanna go off the numbers we have now.
Well, but with the numbers we have now, at four hundred grand a year, over twenty years, that's eight million dollars. That's in the discussion, that's there, that's close.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree.
With zero growth.
Now, I'm, the, the one thing I wanna make sure you're all cautious about with surcharges are, seven years, new council is not more than.
They get rid of them.
They're not gonna be able.
How are they gonna pay for that debt?
If it's a private, if it's a private debt outside of the state, they're not gonna be allowed to get rid of it. It would, it would be a violation.
Technically, they could, but they're, that.
It would be a violation.
They don't have to figure out how they're gonna pay that debt.
Yeah, well, and if you do this with a private bank, the private bank and the lending documents is going to say you cannot get rid of this, so it's going to be a violation of a contract that they tried to.
But there wouldn't be some issue with like policymaking, like, a previous policy committing us to twenty-five years of a surcharge with this debt, and then, if they say, well, we, we, we don't want this, we were voted out, we were voted to get rid of this.
To be sued by a bank.
Come up with a way to pay the debt.
Or get sued by a bank.
So as long as there's no, like, early penalty for payoff, that would probably be fine if they could come up with a way to do it. But.
Well, I, I think that works.
No, that, no, what I'm saying is to those future policymakers, good luck.
Yeah, they're not gonna be.
I, I don't see how they could.
And frankly, I don't think anybody at this table would say, okay, if it's just twenty bucks a month, and I know that's what it is, I would take that over four percent over.
I was gonna say, would they prefer that over their property taxes going up?
Well, in addition to, when we also talk about the surcharge, in addition, like we're doing now, we saw the surcharge, but we're still increasing our rates.
Because, I mean, we would have to get our rates to a point that, so whatever that rate growth is, that's gonna grow four percent, because of the annual four percent.
Yeah.
It, it's exponential, right?
And I think for the most part, I think this council is looking to move forward with yearly rate increases, right, I think for the most part, like.
As needed, yes.
Okay.
As needed, like, we don't wanna, we don't wanna end up in a bad situation, but we also don't wanna raise it just to raise it, right, like, like I said, I don't think, the city is in the business of profiting off its constituents, and we, we want to provide essential services and, and some services that the citizens want, but we don't wanna just add to the water rates, cause we want a little more money in the bank, that's not our job.
No, I think what we were saying though to our constituents during twenty twenty-three was, expect that that's.
The water.
Yeah, on the. Yes.
Sewer's different.
Sewer's different.
No, we have to talk about the sewer.
The sewer, well, cause we knew this wastewater thing was coming up, but when we're talking about alternative solutions to solve it, you know, we wanna, we wanna be able to pay for what the city needs, the city needs in wastewater treatment, right? That doesn't mean like, hey, we got this taken care of, now we're gonna raise rates, just so we got a little more money in the coffer, that's not the point.
But that's what, we get the Mac Water and Light paid off earlier than anticipated, we're showing them, like, hey, we're keeping to our word.
That's right.
And this drops off, so like, and now we're proposing for this, this is what we do, and this is what's gonna keep it reasonable, it's not gonna have to hit our property taxes and all of that.
Well, we're not gonna have to increase sewer rates by twenty-five, forty percent just to qualify for, say, debt, then we have to pay back with that twenty-five or forty.
Which is then just hit their property taxes.
So.
A couple of things to check out then, uh, early payout, if it's, is that a, uh, feasible, or are they gonna hit us with a, uh, charge or anything? Cause I think you, you said before, I think we'll, we'll talk to them.
I don't, there is no, there's no early payoff, I, I looked at that contract, there's. Trying to write them a check next year, they, they might give you a deal to pay it off early, because they might want the cash now for expansion.
Though they may want it, they may have budgeted their budget.
Want the structure, yeah.
So we don't know.
We don't know, but it's a lot of, most private entities, you know, this is the only public entity that I serve on, but most private entities would agree that cash now is worth more than cash later, so. We have to make them an offer that.
It's Mac Water and Light.
All right, so we, we've kinda hit that nail, a lot on the head on wastewater and water, what about, you know, um, when we talk of central services, where do we see, I guess we can start with parks, police, fire, like, things day to day.
I think Carter kind of started talking about where, that's, take care of fiscally responsibly the spaces we have now, and yet, you know, over.
Frankly, my, my thought is, until we have a solid plan for, good outlook on the water,
Mm-hmm.
I'm not even gonna wanna be considering upgrades for parks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, other than stuff that comes strictly out of the Park SDC.
Correct, and in that, like, you know, adding to. Correct, and that, like, you know, adding to the park with those SDCs, I think we just, we gotta really know. Where we're going with this, and so we just need to stay in within the budget for what we have right now at least. For the next two to three years for parks.
To me, the one, the idea that was presented was the last one. For the, we talked about the giant flag. Yeah, no, I'm agreeing, like, that is, let's do that.
Between that, that's great, that's a huge improvement, but I don't, I know a lot of people wanted to see a whole nother park.
Well, like, talking about commons, well, the, I'd be more into embracing community members if they wanted to do. Yes, it did takes a business also, but will of mine is Pump Park. That also was the community. Stepping up a little bit too. I'm game for if a community wants to on their own raised funds for a park. Stuff. Cool, I'll, I'll work with them, but.
I just don't.
I wanna protect, I wanna protect our, our city, both us, as an entity and our constituents' pockets. That we can be having some bills coming. We're gonna work so hard to keep rates where they are through the sewer thing, not just so that we can like. Raise them with a park fee or something like, that's not even in my radar.
That's what I'm saying, I just don't see really, besides what we're doing right now, I don't see any big changes in the next five years.
No.
So, so after this. You don't see any policy growth or policy related to Commons Park being done with money that we have?
What I wish, yes, but I don't see it. I don't see us.
I think I'm just gonna be so fiscally conservative that we know with this whole waste of water, I'm just not, I'm not gonna be comfortable with it.
I'm cool with having it kind of on the radar, but.
Going really, so we're not gonna have more in SDCs, so that really kinda limits our ability. Now, I'm not saying in two to three years, we don't kind of rediscuss this.
Do you have any ideas outside of what we've talked about regarding the water treatment plan?
Can I add one more thing to the water treatment discussion real quick before you answer that?
Okay.
Uh, if we pay it off and, and the, the, the Mack Water and Light debt. And Dayton still wants to make a deal, instead of just becoming covering costs, it could become revenue.
Well, Dayton's pretty much back out of the inner diet. Um, I think right now their immediate focus, which we'll bring into the council here soon, um, is the MOU on, we're. We're pretty much completely locked out of the system. We're taking that money and we're putting that towards extra water we're using from that water line, and they'll have a little bit of cushion. Coming back to Council Carswell. So with this, with this regional water plan, they're gonna be looking at a lot of assets and the value of those assets. And I, I even joked if, you know, Emily, the newspaper yesterday, when we're at the wastewater plant, they're all like. Thing, things can happen where this system can be taken over by somebody else. Not that I would ever wanna see that, but um.
Privatized?
Yes, yeah, um, I've seen that happen to cities before when they couldn't afford things. And then a clean water services comes in, or another one, hey, well, let's take a customer base, let's take the ownership of the system. I would never wanna see that happen. I think, I think the immediate thing that I think is, in, in terms of utility, we. I would like to see how we can back out of our ownership with the wastewater, with the water plant with Dayton. It's a money pit, it's been a money pit. I mean. I mean, I made him, I made a mistake a few days ago when I told you about the thirty thousand dollars. The thirty thousand dollars wasn't for the screens, that was ten thousand to fix the screen. Thirty thousand was between our well. That we're, we're, we're barely getting reduction out of. So looking at, looking at the um.
Do we, we don't even need to rely on Dayton's water.
It's our main secondary source, according to the state, the wells. Yeah, well, yeah, our, our, our shared wells with this, that's our main secondary source, and then our secondary, secondary source is gonna be Mack Water Online. There's no reason why we can't have Mack Water Online as our secondary source.
That's what I thought.
Yes, um, but we still, we still have financial and operational ties to the plant, and I think from. I think Dayton's goal is to do um, an analysis on their water system and. Their financial, their financial outlook, because they got that Fisher Farms property, and I think they wanna do some stuff there too. But looking at what it would cost to just take over ours, the, the rest of our system, buying those rights, and then becoming their, like, doing their own thing.
But how long is Mack Water and Light committed to giving us, not giving us, but?
I mean, we have it in our guy, as long as, as long as it's wholesale in their water. You know, uh, but I mean, I think that's a big thing that I think, especially when it comes to staff, just. Man, having on, we, we were fifty-fifty in this wastewater, in this water plant, and over the past, before I came on board, they're like. They pretty much just put Skata on us. Hey, you're gonna have to pay for Skata. What we didn't budget for this year, we just had it, we just went from one city manager to a new one my first year. And I was like, and that's why I put the MOU coming in front of you all. No, no major capital, no major capital proof can get done. Until it goes to me and council to approve it as part of a budget. And so there was talks about still putting money into the system, you know, if we're not using it. And I said, we, I don't wanna put nothing into this system because I have a feeling, we're not gonna be a part of that system in five or ten years. So I think when we talk. When we're talking not just the wa, the wastewater side, but I think we need to look at on the water side. Like, look at our main, look at our main source of water with the wells and the watershed and the ASR injections. But then also look at how much more, how much better the providers make water light. Than our joint system with that. Yes, it costs wholesale, but water is already, the water is already curated. I mean, it's, they're, they're employing the team then. So in terms of that, it's, it's caused us more of a nuisance since I've been here than it has.
For us to get out of that system, Dayton.
I'm sorry?
I would love for us to get out of that.
Yeah, and I think they would love to too.
About that for years.
And we haven't pulled our share of waters. Even before I got here.
They didn't wanna go in with us on the water tide with McMinville, but then they tried to come in the back door.
Yeah.
We should just get out of it, yeah.
Would that be a goal?
Be my goal. I, I, I feel like that's been my goal for a while. I've been pretty vocal on.
Oh, 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 would, would a better goal be refined?
Because they would buy our rights to it, right?
There would have to be some type of.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we own those rights, but we get rid of those rights that could hurt, I mean.
I don't think it's gonna hurt us with the amount of water that's available at Mack Water and Light.
But Matt, but I think with the regional system, Mack Water Line, if we, if there's any type of. Pro, prospect to buy into a regional water system for future, that may be collateral that we have.
I do remember that, because that was one of the things I know they were trying to use, was trying to get.
Those are charged with water rights, and Mack Water Line can develop those water rights because they have the resources and the time, you know.
Then rather than us selling it, why don't we just have Dayton pay us?
Well, well, right now, right now, we have, we have that shared water right, so I mean, we're doing our fifty-fifty on that. We have our own water right for our roll wells. And they have there for, for the joint wells, we have shared water rights.
Like, if we're not gonna use them and they're gonna use them, why don't they just pay us to use them?
Well, because we're still the owner of that, or in the, the state, because we got the state full H A involved, and they said, well, you're the owner. Even if you're not gonna use it, unless you're fully disconnected from the system, you have to own that water right.
Well, I understand that, if you own it.
Yeah.
Are they, they pay us a monthly surcharge. To use it.
So over the past year, they've been pulling more than their share, right? We've allowed them to have first.
Not really, I mean, they, we've only been pulling like, I think thirty or forty percent of capacity, and it's all gone to them.
That's what I mean, they've pulled, they've gotten first.
Pretty much, yeah.
And we get what's left, so.
We haven't used it forever.
Yeah, so over the last few months, have we been compensated for that?
No, because there's, there's nothing memorialized about that.
So.
That's what I'm getting.
That's what, yeah, so we pay X amount a year.
Or something we're not.
Or something that we don't, by the time they're done with it, there's no water in the bucket.
Well, the, the permit's not really, I mean, the permit's, I think, a two thousand dollars over the five years. That.
You know, all the upkeep.
Well, they're paying all, as part of the MOU, they're, they're paying for everything. We're not gonna pay a single dime or anything.
But that's what's, the, the thing that's coming, right?
You all is gonna say, we're ceasing all dollars and cents into this system for the next couple of years, until they figure out what they're gonna do long for, for their water.
So we're.
We just need to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Once you see the MOU, you'll understand everything.
Causing our rights to it.
Yeah, we're, we're not really securing our rights to them. They're gonna pay for everything, they're paying for maintenance, they're gonna mow everything, they're gonna pull all the water. The hundred, the hundred something thousand dollars here that we're paying for the system and the debt, we're keeping that in, in our, which is, I think, accounted for here.
Sorry, I went down a rabbit hill, rabbit trail, we can get, we can go back to where we were at.
So, I'm looking at parks, it looks like no major projects until we figure out the water.
Other than the one we've discussed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty in progress, that's different.
Right, just.
All right, what about police, fire? I know that's, it's been a hot topic. I know there was discussions earlier this year about. What are we looking, policing? I know we've had conversations. I don't know if this is something long term, or if there's something we just say, hey, we put on the back burner, we're not worried about it.
I just don't see it being able to happen in the next five years.
I love our sheriffs and our deputies. I love our firefighters, but we spend way too much of our budget on. Way, way.
So we get a million dollars a year in property taxes, sixty-seven percent, sixty-three percent is going to fire.
It's like sixty-two point seven.
That's sixty-two ten.
Yeah, because, 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 uh, Council Borough and I, Council Boroughs and I met with, um. Commissioner Johnson and then, um, Fire Chief Heck, um, previous Fire Chief Terry, who's now the Fire Chief in Amity. And, um.
He came out of retirement?
Yeah, and then another, um, and then, um, one of the new calls in for the fire district members, and we're actually gonna bring to council. Um, if there's any type of, of discussion they wanna have on fire, but that'll be coming at the next meeting after I do a little bit more research on. What that looks like.
If I'm looking five years out, I don't, I, this isn't something I want done in the next five.
Well, I mean, it's five years out, but this, this.
It would be interesting to start exploring the idea of internalizing the police force. Explore it. If it doesn't add up dollars and cents wise, then exploration will be short-lived, but. I, I do, I love the deputies who serve this, but they're awesome, but.
Certainly, they couldn't work for us either.
But, but we spend a lot of money, like, like. And it, look, it may not be feasible. It may be something we look at and we say, okay, yeah, we can do this if we want one officer. To run the whole place, and then it wouldn't be feasible, right? But, you know, the rates at which this, this is increasing annual spend. It might make sense to explore it.
Every year.
Yeah, every year. Right, yeah, but uh, it, it might make sense to explore it within the next five years. Again, not saying it needs to be like done.
No, but I think also exploring.
A feasibility, I, I sense in five years, maybe have a feasibility study looking at.
Does that also kind of mirror the thought process for the fire department? Like, right now, we have a. Like, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I think that, that, I, I would. Like to see that happen too. I think it would be easier to do the fire department than it would be to create.
I want to both, I just picked one to say aloud, so I'm good with this.
I think that, that doing the fire department, we have the facility, we have the equipment, we have. I think it's. To me, it seems more feasible to.
So it sounds like things like the fire department and the police and stuff, the whole point of that isn't that we're not happy with services, it's. Can we trim our budget with it, which to me falls hand in hand on what we first started the conversation of. What, how can we keep our budget from growing?
Yeah, I mean, we're spending a ton of money.
Which, so, I feel like everything circles around, we gotta free up money because of the sewer.
I don't, here's, I, I don't even necessarily believe that. Like, we do need to find a way to fiscally be able to handle the wastewater treatment situation.
I think the concern is over half our. Property taxes are going to.
Yes, I think just generally.
They don't even, are not all in-house.
I think just as a general principle, I prefer not to spend wastefully, and I'm not saying it's wasted, their services are fantastic. But if we can get a similar quality service for lesser of our constituents' money. Then we should, like, that's our job. We, we shouldn't just, hey, this is easy, they put the contract in front of us, let's just sign it. I know it's more than this year. That's not the way we should do things, and I don't think we do it that way, but if there are alternative methods, we should look at them. If it's the fiscally responsible thing to do, regardless of where those savings go, if it's for waste, if we didn't have a wastewater project right now, I would still be saying this.
Oh, yeah.
We shouldn't spend money we don't need to spend.
Well, that kind of brings up what Brandon was talking about, I mean. You know, most private enterprise does the job better than government, sorry to say that, but, so what about privatizing?
Privatizing which part?
The water treatment.
I thought you were about to tell me police now, since.
Then they control the rates, right?
You would, you would have to have a service providing agreement like we have with recology, where it has to be within a certain profit margin. Nor if they're gonna raise rate. It would have to be such an uptight contract.
Yeah.
Which then they might not even be interested in, I would.
How do you do that? Sorry, staff, I'm, I, it's gonna hurt me from saying this, but then that reduces staff, because then you don't need water.
I, I love, I love our staff. But. Yeah, I, I'm all for essential staff. I, I'm not, I'm not coming to this table saying, Brandon, how can we randomly cut? Personnel.
But then, but when going back to, if we privatize it, it's kinda like going back to police and fire. Eventually, the costs get so, and then we can't control it, then. So it's like, if you don't, you know.
What we have with the sheriffs.
Yeah.
I think we have a better, better idea with like surcharges and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'd rather pay ourselves.
And I, I mean, not that, it's safe, if you become a city of twenty-five, thirty thousand and twenty-one hundred, you know, maybe at that time, it just. There's a whole thing of like. I, I even in, in our water, in our regional water meeting, uh, last month, I think when Mayor was even, I even asked, hey, I think even Mayor Frank and Dayton had been asked the same thing too. What happens if, like, we just wanted to like, get rid of all of our, I mean, give all of our utility infrastructure to Mack Water and Light for utilities? Because of all the anti-PGE sentiment out there locally.
I mean, that would be a conversation I would be open.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it'd be ridiculous, it'd be, it'd be expensive, but then you'd also have to get the buy-in from that water line, and then having a seat at the table again. Of not, us not having a seat at the table, because then he's just set rates for us, so.
Way more friendly than P G.
Very friendly when they came in here the other month.
Local gasoline.
It's true. I was friendly though.
Yeah, I watched the video and I went, wow, they just hate them out.
That was the lead being friendly guy.
All right, so we talked parks, we talked police, we talked utilities, um. Are there any concerns with, I mean, I know housing, we're, we're growing up a lot. But I know there's been talk about, you know, the parking and busing at the seams. Are, are we worried about some, how growth is going? Like, I mean, there's only so much we can do to, can statewide to contain growth, because I mean, we're kind of forced ahead by the state on housing.
That is happening in a lot.
Yeah, I'm not, but housing capacity wise, I'm not worried about. I think if markets, like, if a big developer comes in and wants to buy something that needs to be. You know, U G B annexed or whatever, like. That'll work itself out. I don't think we need to buy a way to.
They would have just left it at twenty-five miles an hour.
I think that might be off the top.
You gotta parking lot that.
Well, no, but I mean, I mean, we are gonna have a T S P done in twenty twenty-eight, and there's gonna be deliverables for the city out of that, I mean.
That's my point, I think that.
But.
The traffic is an issue. I just don't know how to fix it other than building, like I said, a stupid bridge.
You'd split one ways.
And I, and I'm, that's, that's been discussed on what Second Street, Third Street looked like compared to Newburgh. Um, what that looks like.
I thought you asked about gross capacity for housing.
In order to have housing capacity, you gotta be able to get the cars in and out.
I would say this, so yesterday, I'll come back to McMinville.
Because it's not gonna keep growing here that much.
I was stuck in traffic for twenty minutes, coming back to McMinville at five, at five fifty yesterday.
Yeah.
And I was, and just as somebody, I was like, man, it would really, it would, it would really be unfortunate if I was traveling, not up to Portland, but just like as a worker in McMinville, stuck at that thing. It's like, man, but it's like, there's only, I mean, we have a right of way, that's only gonna go so far. I mean, we, we can only do so much in terms of length of, I mean, width of a street.
To, to Kayla's point, that wasn't an issue before they changed the speed limit to twenty miles.
Was, just not as bad.
Yeah, it's got.
Because the problem is, is now you have people who do twenty and twenty-five.
Eighteen.
And so then.
One meets behind you.
If everybody went twenty, then the space between cars wouldn't change, people would be able to turn out. Those twenty and someone else going twenty-five, we're, we're.
Someone's trying to be nice, so they stop to let you through, but you don't know if you're letting me through or not.
It's my, the, the point is, that's all ODOT control. That's out of our control. Unless we're gonna do, turn like Second Street into a one-way, Fourth Street into a one-way. And then there's, you're gonna have to work with ODOT on how this merge back into Third. That is a massive project we're talking about.
I know, we have the water treatment issue going on. Every time we have one of these planning sessions, I'm like, somebody's gonna bring it up. It's already in the plan, right? And it never comes up, ever.
What the trip?
The split one ways.
I don't know if it's in the plan.
It's been talking, it's been talked about, I mean.
It out.
But it wasn't actually formalized in the plan. The state made, the state made said, we love this, but we're not paying for it. Good luck, help. We'll support you, you know? I think there was even talk about cutting into the right way.
At one point it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at some point it would break apart and then there'd just be.
Oh.
It's not. Didn't they say they can't do that though, because it's not wide enough?
It's pretty easy to force them.
Well, so like one thing I noticed last year during the tree lighting. Because we messed up with, you know, the traffic flow, I didn't realize how many cars come in from Madison and they already turn left onto Second.
Yeah.
To skip Madison and all that.
Yeah, that's what I do. They're gonna do it, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, like, second has more traffic than I thought. So then there was nobody there and I was like, well, I'm going right.
Honestly, the best way to go is you get you you get to the pub, uh you get public works, make a left at, you make a left right there in front of Robin Shop and just take it to Adams, right there, I mean, I.
I don't wanna be that guy, but I think we've gotten a little of that.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Sorry.
Yes.
Um, okay, so we've we've talked police, we've talked parks, we've talked fire, we've talked um. Uh, well, we'll go back to housing. So you were mentioning about housing.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not concerned about this ci- I I don't think it's the city's responsibility to be like, hey, let's add some space for private developers to purchase and build. Like, if they want the space, they'll come to the city and say, hey, we wanna get this annexed thing because we wanna buy that. I think that's the way to approach it. I think. Productivity on that is gonna bog down the efficiency when we're trying to pay attention to other bigger projects and.
And friendly.
I think the city is kind of split down the middle on who wants to add room for growth and who doesn't.
So I think we already, the, because of the cit- or the state's rule about a single. Piece of property that would be a single dwelling home that they can now put a duplex on that, as long as it, we're already gonna. There's already that little bit of wiggle room as, I mean, I drive through town and there's plenty of properties. That need redeveloping because they're inhabitable. And so. I think there's already a little bit of growth opportunity, like you said, we're building up, not out. I don't think, I I don't know, it's, I mean, there's a lot across the street from my house and. I'm I'm raising myself for if that finally gets bought, that a duplex is gonna go in there. It sucks because of parking, but.
There's still an empty lot right there?
Uh huh. Because it's a, it no, it's a hard one to. Develop on.
It's a slope.
There's a slope and there's a at the corner with a fire hydrant and. I think it's built, anyway, we're going off tangent, but. There's still pockets to.
When interest rates come down, I'll probably sell.
Probably, actually.
I bet you that happens pretty soon here. It's what they keep saying.
They trickled down a little bit.
Or can I unannex my house?
I'm just kidding.
In the middle of town, yeah, but then they're gonna have to. They're gonna have to pay toll to get to in front of your.
You have to be a constituent to be eligible for city council, so.
Oh, but you can be your own mayor. And you'll.
Be your own emperor. Why stop at mayor?
Build a giant tower, son.
Yeah.
I won't say king. Okay, so Brandon, what do you need from us?
Um, I guess, I mean, going back to downtown, you know, I know Council Paul, Council Paulson said something, you know, making. You know, downtown, you know, helping out businesses, making more accessible. I think we've started a little bit about that with helping them outdoor. I got some pushback on the outdoor charges already, but I said that.
The board commissioner celebrated it today.
Yeah, I saw that. Um, I think we're making a headway in terms of a a other business friendly initiatives or or policies. Is there anything that? You all think is a council that? Maybe more, you know?
Yeah, I think we should look into businesses that have buildings and they're that aren't operating and they're sitting there vacant for years.
Yeah.
That the government gets involved and tells them, start using it for commercial purposes or sell it.
Do you want to do that? I'm going to be, I need to disagree with.
Business of private property.
I think if you own the property, which wall is something we could.
Yeah, well, it's really ridiculous when you have one person who pretty much owns. A bunch of them and controls it and we don't have businesses.
Yeah, selected enforcement, I don't want to do that.
Well, then I say that we start finding them.
Can we talk to them?
Can we, can we discuss? Can we add this at the council topic of what our abilities is and our desires is?
Yeah, I actually have a bit about that.
We're not gonna be bringing.
Or like a business that's using it for something that it's not. Supposed to be used for, like, I don't know.
That's a code.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And I don't know if it is or not, but.
For it to sit there vacant for over a year.
I but, yeah, I I don't agree.
Just a discussion, isn't it? You know, that could be.
Yeah, can we just, I mean, I, that's not a five-year plan, but that's just.
Let me go chase them, you know, that.
Five-year plan for me.
No, no, it's five-year plan, it's my.
Well, then also.
Like, that's more immediate, smaller, like.
Here's how all this came up at an L D A meeting, um Council Paulson and I were talking about, there was like, well, anything could be done about the vacant buildings. And in Kansas. We, the council had one, wanted to do a vacant building ordinance program where we were telling owners either turn it off for sale. Or you gotta do something with it. And it got so hot that it trickled up to the state legislator. This, our little ordinance became a topic at the state level.
First anyone surprised me that how.
Yeah, um, and so let me chase, I mean, if you want me to bring on the next agenda, I'll get some more clarity from David and Chase on those emails, but I could do that, something more of a short-term thing. And we can at least have a discussion.
Say have enough.
Talking about as the government forcing people to sell their own property.
Yeah.
No, there's other options.
A discussion is what I said.
Yeah.
I have a discussion. If I were that person, I'd agree. It's on the market for fifty million dollars.
You can buy it.
Well, actually, that and 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 Kansas, the way the city attorney and the council had drafted the ordinance, it had to be market rate. If there was anything overinflated, yeah, they would, yeah.
Okay, so that, let's put that, let's put that as a conversation.
Yeah.
Whether we move forward as anything or not, I think there's, that could also lead into a conversation of. Vitality of downtown, like, if we can't go, if we can't do anything.
From growth.
I, so if we can't do anything, then what what else can we do if we?
I'm literally aware of fact that people have literally gone to.
Understood.
Try try to lease and rent these places.
But the owner, it's theirs, right? Like, and here's the other thing, I think we need to recognize that there are a couple of institutions in downtown that have done a great job with their buildings. And there are new businesses that have moved in and they're doing a fantastic job of making those buildings look new and great.
Made it great, by the way, our our neighbor right here, we're fantastic.
Yeah.
No, I.
The bakery is doing great with aesthetics, the Alastos there, there we have.
Honestly, over the last three years, we've probably seen the best improvements downtown that we've seen in decades. Like, things are on the right track. I don't think with things moving in that direction, the government has any business telling people what to do with their building. That's crazy.
Okay, so put it on as a discussion, and if we decide that we have no right to say anything, then what do we want to do instead?
The government can control what certain buildings go in certain places.
We have a business. So ordinance.
We can always put a.
Well, well, I mean, one, one thing that we really haven't talked about is. You know, I know we're not the, you're not, we're we're not in the capacity of the Urban Renewal Agency Board right now. But I mean, we're we're year four, about to be year five of the U R A. And.
It was all contingent on that piece of great property right?
Yes. I had a conversation with Counsel Gilgan, I won't. Devolve in that conversation because I don't wanna bring another whole rabbit hole for thirty minutes up, but um.
That's directed at me, I know.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, I mean, I'll be, I'll be candid.
That one's on me.
Oh, no, be not be candid, I asked like, what would it be like if we partnered with a developer, maybe purchased that property or with the state? But that, but then that comes into like wanting to create debt, to buy something, to stimulate the economy. And that's not something, and then obviously what happened in McMinville with the uh the old mill and how that didn't turn out too well, but I just, you know, I I.
But they don't even wanna sell that property.
Well, they do, but it's said a fixed amount of money.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, so so to me, they don't wanna sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna pay.
I just think that there's a different opinion of valuation.
Yeah.
Even with the hundred-year flood plain thing now, they still have that, those thoughts?
What, so U G B, not U G B?
U R A.
U R A. Are you, whatever it is, the Urban Renewal District? How does that impact our our next five years? If it's it's not kicking off, it's not.
I mean, wh- when you, when you get to the last two years of the tenure plan, you look at it and say, okay, we have. I don't know, I'm gonna throw a number out there, I don't have it on for me, I'm gonna throw number, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. All right, well, we have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to do some street, street improvements, sidewalk enhancements, plant some trees, signage, lights. Cool, there's, that's, that's what we're able to accomplish in ten years of this U R, U R D.
So the U R D is only good for ten years and whatever we.
Well, then the initial, the initial discussion was, let's take a look at this in 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 ten-year increments, because all the finance of planning went out ten years, and then he had additional.
Like, we're kind of building the cat.
Yeah.
The.
You have to renew it, I think, ten, I think this one is set to be renewed every ten years.
At this point.
Yeah. So I, so. Something to think about as well, I mean, obviously not tonight, but you know, how that downtown, you know. What downtown can look like, um. Uh, so we touched base on that, um. Finage ninety nine, utilities.
Roads.
Roads, I know, I know, that's another good one, streets, I mean.
Well, we talked about next year, that one big project over there.
But yeah, outside of that, what do we, I mean. We'll have, we'll have, we'll have that money spent and we'll come to get money yearly, or do we wanna focus on?
Canyon Road or?
Canyon View.
Canyon View. The other one that has some issues that we.
Yeah, I'm just talking about like in, as 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 the staff starts looking at how we how we approach street projects. Is the council okay, just staff brings what we feel and what we look to have the, the. The, this is the biggest issues, or you wanna focus more on residents? I mean. I mean, we've, we've, we've been, we've been deterring to Gordon for the most part outside of Bridge, because that's been here since I got in the board, but. We would, you know, obviously, you know, we we did Monroe and we're doing Madison, we're looking at some, you know, market and and all these other things. I just don't know if we're looking at. We wanna focus on residential area more, we wanna focus on those ancillary projects or like downtown and the connector streets, we wanna, I mean.
Well, we have the T S P coming that will give us some of the fun team things. My thought, my focus is the. Infrastructure aspect, not even the usability, but like, like, it's not that okay where a stop sign goes or it doesn't go, it's. The maintenance of it, I don't, what is it gonna take for us as a council when we're done? And I know some are done before others are up, to hand off. Our main roads. In better shape than we inherited bridge.
Like we already do.
I think, yeah, with the plan.
As long as they're gone.
Staff should just keep coming to us. You guys have been.
I I don't see some better off ninety nine parking. And I don't know how how the city would be involved with that, but I think that that would, that would enhance somebody visiting a business here if they had a good place to park.
So there a way to turn the least part of the park over here into a parking lot?
Hmm.
What part of the commons?
One where there's a, the baseball field that in the commons.
I mean, yeah, I mean. It's kind of like the fire that went across from the fire, the fire department. I was asking one of the volunteers, because somebody came up to me and they're like, hey, we have some. Uh E V charger money, and I did E V charger stuff in previous organizations. And I was like, oh, cool, it'd be great to put two E V chargers right across from the fire. And I was like, well, how often the the, you know, the does that fill up? And he said, oh, well, when we have trainings and we have major. Catastrophes when everybody has to roll out, um. But then just got the idea of like downtown parking, because especially now with, you know, with with the growth of downtown and like, I know like Amman's talking about putting. Eight or nine different tables and chairs out in front of the right of way. But then you take away a park. When to do that, you know?
One, I think she was asking us to add parks, it's.
I mean, I mean, that is a struggle parking downtown and.
Who's been the one spot that I thought that we had for available for to turn into parks?
Especially since it's like three blocks from another park.
Where the park that we.
We have parts that last parking.
I think that to excavate Terry to make into parking would be.
Yeah, but it's a longer walk.
Yeah.
This is right here.
Right now, yeah, but it's.
Yeah, you're right right there. Only we were the church that has so much parking, so jealous of their parking lots. Um.
I mean, there's that property right behind us. This way. I mean, I, I'm sorry, um.
Where they wanted to put.
No, no, so where where they were staging all the work, the work for like the ninety nine, a couple of years back, right here behind us, um, on, at, was that across from uh. Where preview, uh, what is that, Adams, Adams and Fifth, right here?
Yeah, isn't that right where they wanted to put that? I'm pretty sure.
I know.
Okay, so.
We have, I mean, that that that's a lot.
Finding parking, finding parking for downtown and what we can do to encourage or what we're allowed to do for these businesses. To me, that's all one big topic of the vitality of downtown.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that if people can stop and park and.
We have a big side and it says, hey, downtown parking.
Partially looking at it over here, right?
I'm not too into, oh, well, L D A itself is gonna grow down close. I feel like we've. Oh. Rose that road and they haven't, and we as a town within, without infringing on rights or whatever.
This whole section is.
What can we do, like?
I know, what can we, Jefferson?
I don't think it's our job.
Four twenty K Jefferson.
I agree. But I don't think. Uh, the vault is gonna buy an empty lot to me.
No, here's that, I think parking is one thing, but I don't think it's our job to like, kind of boost business, private.
No, that's not what I'm.
Survive the other.
The usability of what we have.
We're looking at building up downtown.
Sure.
Hey, my idea has always been, could that be a parking?
I like the idea of parking next to the, in the, the park by the community center, because that also adds parking. For the park that's riverfront and has no parking.
Yeah.
You know, it's two blocks away, right, like.
And on that side of ninety nine.
It serves a city purpose. Is it going to benefit local businesses? Sure, but like, it's also going, you know, like. If we, if this town ever wants to do like a concert series in the summer at that park, there's nowhere for people to park right now.
Yeah, and half of that park is still a big park.
Right, yeah.
And all the food trucks.
Uh, Jim Jackson brought up the um. The west end of that park that partial street was uh city-owned. Um, is there, is there a way to create some parking there that without? Um, interfering with the private homes that go over there?
Okay, so.
Cause it goes nowhere.
So I guess the topic would be looking into where parking could happen.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
Even thinking outside the box.
It'd be ideal if we didn't have to go spend money to acquire land.
Mm hmm, that's why I thought of the park.
Yeah.
No, not accurate.
Yeah.
That could be a great.
And I'm not saying the whole park has to be turned into it.
No.
Yeah.
Cause the other half can be used for the food trucks. I'm just, I'm just waiting for us to get a dang food truck here, some tacos.
Hey, the.
We put the new city hall next to that com- community center, yeah, parking right smack in the middle of downtown ninety nine.
I wanna know where where my statue's going in all this.
I sliced this.
Uh, thirty bust statue.
No, just life size.
Okay, so parking in downtown, but especially with the walking and we have, we have a good amount of sidewalks downtown.
Mm hmm.
Does that baseball diamond ever get used, sorry?
I hear that, but I've never seen.
Never seen anybody.
It's not regulation size, so you're not gonna, from my understanding, you're not gonna get like. Park, park and wreck from Mac bringing, you know?
I think I, I would like to see us do the, the pavilion. I think it's used more for harvest.[1682.94] Uh, harvest festival or Saturday market or whatever, you get a pavilion down there with some.
But you need parking for stuff like that, so I'm looking at that, okay.
That's why the other.
Have to be a whole nother work session during a meeting of.
It doesn't look as big actually on the map, but what, the park.
Commons, it's because there's green space behind it, all that, uh, that bunts up to the river, it's all, it's not developed behind it, so. At least in my mind, so when you're looking at the park, it's not like there's buildings right there.
Oh, right.
I, I know, we can put a parking lot across the street from my house.
Brandon, does that park connect to Terry?
No.
No.
Close to it, but no.
There's railroad track in between it too, isn't there?
It's too bad that section for the urban growth boundary didn't get. Go through, they're crazy park right there. That's a nice giant section of town, could be.
What do you see, Lee?
A lot of numbers.
Are they dollar signs, are they, uh?
Numbers. Yes.
Interesting.
What is this here, right across from the, what is all this?
That is, um. Just great, it's natural, but I think it's owned by, I think it, it's owned by, no, I think there's residents. I think some.
It's, it's not a lot.
Okay, Brandon?
The railroad has.
Between the park and the river.
Who owns that, there's not a lot.
Oh, we do.
We own that?
I think we had, before I got here, there was a, a Lance Robert council and. The city with, one of the landowners, because I know some of that, but, uh. The railroad, but yeah, no, we, we have right way right there from what, from what I've been told.
But it's in the flood zone, isn't it?
Yeah, but you can build a parking lot.
I was thinking more of turning the existing baseball diamond into a parking lot, you'd have to do some kind of land bridge or. Tunnel to walk through the railroad right away to get to this other section, but.
I've seen a permit though get done. I've seen a permit get done for a little red though, to build a trail.
We're not gonna talk about trails and rails.
But I've, but I've seen it.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know what the topography is to any of yours.
That's probably, that's probably the one place in town I have yet to step foot in, just because of the existence.
Not possible, maybe it's true.
Not right now. Will go surprise, like, can't plan a commission, thing on the window. Brandon, I'd be interested in. I'm a councilman, like, I would. I would be interested in learning more about that property. I didn't realize we owned it.
I think we own it, I, I've been.
Back to the. A meeting and tell us who owns it and.
Okay, slipper right, the orange on, on the paper lot right there, right?
If we own it, is there a way to? It's, yeah.
That's a pretty big section.
Yeah, remember, there was, I remember there was like, I got code complaint with like the Union Pacific and like some dumping, but then. Robert and Greg were like, no, we had to go clean up, because that was ours, so, let me double check and I'll, I'll come back with you.
Stuff you're talking about, and I just remember. Like, part of the issue was with the fact that the, the railroad. Have something or own something with it, like. Yeah.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, I was told that, that, that maybe had the president acquired with council like years ago, like, something like that, but yeah, I mean.
Something very vaguely I'm remembering.
Yeah, there's.
Something, but I didn't know which direction that was going. So I think. I think because soon is such a big thing, that's our, you know, until we get that squared away.
Yeah, oh, well, we're gonna, kind of. Roll on to something else, maybe, uh, what's happening with the sidewalks and curb repairs?
Oh, for in front of people's houses, yes, I'm waiting on, so, once we get done with. The R V and some of the front yard parking stuff that's been taking the plate, um, we're gonna probably be working on that.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not trying to do everything all, I'm trying to just focus on that, because I'll tell you the past three months have been very stressful. Um, regarding a lot of the driveway and the R V and the parking stuff, and so I.
The budget coming.
I'm sorry.
Only gonna get worse with the budget coming. Your stressful time of year is coming.
And so, the budget's okay, it's, it's.
Not once we get our hands on it. Yeah, I think what you're hitting at was kind of, when I was saying, I wanna see us fine tuning. What we already got, you know.
We do.
Now you're gonna have to screenshot that and submit it for public record.
Before I forget that, I gotta find tune on, on the sidewalk, those repairs, rather than giving people six bags of concrete. In their Mini Cooper or whatever they bring to pick it up and us carrying this stuff around. I'd rather for a project that may be done or may not be done, maybe not properly, I'd rather see us. Uh, give a financial aid to, once the project is completed, you, you turn in the plans, just like you have planned, but once the project, project's completed. Got a hundred dollar check for financial aid.
I don't think we approved the.
Yeah, there was, it was just going for sit down.
I know, it was just a thought, but I'm putting it back also. I had, I had a thought.
I just wanna make sure I wasn't mistaken.
No, no, not, it hasn't, hasn't moved very forward, but I'm, I was just thinking more about, you know, we give out. Uh, this concrete, like I said, the project may be done, may not be done, may be done correctly, I'd rather see the, the. If we approve something to, to come about, once the project is completed and approved.
A rebate or something?
No, rebate, financial aid, however, whatever you wanna call it, if. Scholarship. Scholarship, whatever, and for a, you know, we talked about a limited period of time, two years or eighteen months or whatever, get this done. And so.
Brandon, is there any big projects or anything that you're not thinking, that you're thinking that we're not thinking of in the next five years that you think should be on our radar? Or that's important to you?
Besides the city hall, Brandon, that's not.
No, I mean, I'm honestly, I mean, it sounds renewed, but I know there was some issues before I got here, but the, um. I, well, I know I'll probably never see a city hall in my time here as a city manager, but I do think we need to do something about this sign outside. Staff, I mean, like, it looks like.
I'd rather tear it down than it stay.
Yeah, it looks bad, it's on, the staff comes here and they say, and you gotta do two hours to sit there and do this.
Do you want the, the monument on the ground that's like the electric?
I, I would love something that's gonna take us two minutes just to type something up, this weekend, council, like. And I know I wasn't here, but I know there was, I know there was a certain, you know, and I don't know, there was a, I think you were made, made of the. Planning commission at the time, and I think there was some narrative about, about digital signage in town and.
Yes, the proposed plan violated our own codes.
Yes, was, I wasn't here for that, and I, I turned up to look back a lot of the history, but was it? Revising the plan for the city just to put something there? Or was it like not exclusive for the whole city?
It was like the footage of the sign or something.
And they want, they wanted to put a digital sign up, but, uh. Yeah, it would have violated our own code the way they were doing it, and they were trying to do it that way to save money, but it would have violated our own code, so.
Does a, oh, is it a rolling digital sign that violates the code or just a?
It was just, uh, because of, it was something in the. Give me, it's been ten years. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, right, I was on the planning motion, and it was, uh, it had something to do with. They said they're not changing out this sign, so it's the same sign, so therefore, I think it had to do with like the length of the.
Someone was upset about the book being ugly with a big new beautiful sign.
It was gonna be the size. It was gonna.
It was the height, the height of the pole was the problem, but I think the city admin at the time was trying to say, well, it's the same size. Well, if you take down the whole sign and put up a digital one, it's not the same.
Yeah, but then later after that, we were looking, because this was a big thing Marie Sproul was pushing for. Um, she is, it was ones that, it's like the one in, uh.
Yeah.
And it's electric, and I thought we were looking at like thirty or thirty five thousand.
That's, that's probably low now, just, I'm currently.
Before COVID.
But if that's something, you know, with the budget coming up, maybe that's something that we look at, see if we can.
I, I would like that, because we, we have so much going on now, and it's more modern, and honestly, like, the first thing you see passing city hall, you see that sign.
Sign go away than what it looks like. I, I just, no one, no one. I love that you're updating it and you're trying to put the stuff on there, but like, I, I know what it means.
Yeah.
But twelve, sixteen or whatever, council.
Yeah.
No one knows with that.
I know, and we have, we don't, we don't have like.
And so what were you saying about people driving in?
No, they, they drive in, like, that's one of the first things they see, like, it's a, a beat up old Wendy's sign. When, even Wendy's has gone digital, but they're, hey, ninety nine cent, you know, and not ninety cents anymore, but the chicken nuggets, you know, like. Just like, I know, I, I mean, we're, we're doing what we can to the community center and city hall with what we got, because. Just some limitations financially and space, but I think that would really freshen up downtown, if we can do something with a sign that says. Mark, you know, we got a little pumpkin, market fest this weekend, or city council this weekend, or. Like, it just feels that like.
So with coming up for, again, the new budget, the next budget. Maybe if you have time or staff to look into it and then put it on the budget as a possible project.
And first of all, nobody reads the sign with that voice in their head, that's way too exciting for a council. I, I, I'm literally in the midst, I met with the sign company, I'm in the midst of replacing a sign very similar to that. I would try to get as many bids as possible, because the ranges are all over.
Yeah, but it should be electric, I totally agree with you.
Electronic.
I think, I, I, I mean, that, I think that would, I think that would. It would make staff very happy too, because, I mean, I have to pull public works out there, and they're out there sitting here for an hour spelling. Sees Brandon, or it's black and red and it's all like, and they're out there sitting there, it's cold out.
I've seen them do that and I'm just like.
It would certainly die on the cost, but I don't, I don't think.
Right, so let's have a conversation about sign. Keep it, replace it, toss it.
Yeah, because honestly, I, that would be something I'd like to see done within a year.
I'm glad Brandon brought that up.
Because that was a big thing that, uh, we were trying to do with the council before, and yeah, there was just a lot of hiccups we ran into.
Let's just not violate our own codes.
True.
Or just for us.
Worked out.
The time that this was having, I think this was a few years before.